Please be seated. As it is now four o'clock, I declare this meeting open for the transaction of business which may properly come before it. Welcome to the 2024 inaugural meeting of City Council. My name is Tracy Whitkey, City Clerk, and it is my privilege to call this meeting to order. I begin by acknowledging the city of Moose Jaw is located within Treaty Four territory, the original lands of the Cree, Salto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and the homeland of Métis Nation. The Nahowoc translation of Moose Jaw is Mosotapskun and is the shared landscape for indigenous peoples and settlers from around the world who call Moose Jaw home. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we are committed to move forward in equal partnership with indigenous nations with respect and in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. Normally, the rules of decorum in council chambers are quite formal and businesslike. However, we will relax those rules for tonight. Before we commence with the taking of the oath of office by members of the council, I encourage any family members or friends who would like to take pictures of the ceremonies to feel free to do so. Applause is also welcome. We have with us today His Honor Judge Brian Hendrickson of the Provincial Court of Saskatchewan, who will be administering the oath. We will shortly observe the swearing-in of his worship Mayor James Murdoch, who will also receive the chain of office. Following the mayor, each of the councillors will be called forward to take the oath. I would like to now call on Judge Hendrickson to begin the proceedings. Your Honor.
This way.
James Murdoch.
Yes. Worship party, are you prepared to swear or affirm to the following oath?
I am.
Would you prefer to swear or affirm this oath?
Swear.
All right. I wonder if you could, your worship, just read the oath, please, sir.
I, James Murdoch, having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council.
Yes. Yes, sir, I wonder if you can just sign two copies of yours.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just sum that as well. Congratulations, your worship.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Delaurier. I'm sorry. Delaurier, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, are you prepared to swear or affirm to the oath or affirmation as a member of council? What would be your preference, affirmation or oath?
I'll affirm.
Okay. And I'll just ask you then to read out the following oath.
I, Carla Delaurier, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understood, and agreed to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the city council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council.
Yes. If you could just sign both copies, please.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councillor Chris Warren. Councillor, are you prepared to either swear to or affirm to the oath or affirmation as a member of council?
Yes.
What's your preference?
Swear.
Okay. Ask you to just take the Bible. Thank you, sir. And I wonder if you could just read that oath, sir.
I, Chris Warren, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understood, and agreed to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules, and Conduct and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council.
Yes. I wonder if you could just sign both copies, sir. Congratulations, sir. Councillor Boyle. Sir, are you prepared to swear or affirm to the oath or affirmation, member of council?
I will swear.
I swear. And I wonder if you could please take the Bible in your hand there and then just please read the oath, sir.
Sure. I, Patrick Boyle, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required by me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest with the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council.
And I wonder if you could please sign both copies, sir. That looks sincere. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councillor, would you prefer to swear to the oath or affirmation or affirm?
I swear.
Swear?
Okay.
I wonder if you could just please read the oath.
I, Heather Ebby, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or any or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agreed to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules, and Conduct and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and by any other act and by the council.
I wonder if you could just sign both copies. Thank you. Sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is kind of old hat for you, I think, isn't it? Yeah. Would you prefer to swear or affirm to the oath?
I'll swear.
Okay. I wonder if you could just read the oath, please.
I, Don Luning, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agreed to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council.
I wonder if you could just sign both copies. Thank you. My signature kind of pale significantly. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Are you prepared to swear or affirm to the oath?
Please.
I wonder if you could just read the oath, sir.
I, Jamie Logan, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Moose Jaw, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the Cities Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the Cities Act and any other act or law and by the council, disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part Seven of the Cities Act, and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the Cities Act and any other act and by this council.
If you could just sign both copies, please. Congratulations.
Well, I'm told that it's a tradition that the presiding judge is to impose the sentence. So I think it's only appropriate that firstly, I congratulate the new mayor and all of the city councillors. The task that you're undertaking is a, I'm sure will be rewarding, but it will have its challenges. And I do not envy you in terms of some of the issues that you have to grapple with. But I think we all respect the fact that you ran for city council or for the mayor's job. And we wish you well. We all wish you well over the course in the next four years. That's not the sentence that I'm imposing. The sentence I'm imposing is I sentence you to four years of hard labor because I know that it will be very hard, some of the work that you do, all of the work that you do. But again, you have our respect, you have our admiration for the very difficult job that you do. So good luck.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I now invite his worship Mayor James Murdoch to assume the chair for the remainder of the meeting. Your worship, please assume the chair.
Thank you, City Clerk. To begin with, I would like to call on Knowledge Keeper Roger Ross, who will lead us in the ceremony of smudging.
Worship, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. You're successful bid to come into office, to serve your people, to serve your community. My name is Roger Ross and they call me a Knowledge Keeper. More than that, I'm not an elder, I'm just old. It's not the same thing, really. But it's an honor for me to be here to offer this ceremony for you. This is a cleansing ceremony for us, for as indigenous people. The medicine that you see in my hand here, those in the public, this is sage. It grows on the prairies here. It is medicinal in that with the winter months coming, this would be used for the opportunity to, you can make a tea with it and help with your cold. It's also good as a coagulant. So if your children or yourself ever get cuts, you can put it directly on the cut and it'll stop the bleeding in thirty seconds. So that's a little bit about the medicine, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You can place it here. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Congratulations.
Whenever we do a cleansing like this, it's customary to offer tobacco to the Knowledge Keeper or elder who's been asked to do this. And the way I was taught is that whatever offering is made be placed in front of the elder or the Knowledge Keeper so that we have an option of whether or not we can actually help you. All of our elders are very specific in the knowledge that they have and how they've been trained. So they may not be the one that you need. Because this is smudge, it's something that we all do anyway. And it's something that I know that I'm capable of doing. It's really not that complicated. And so when I accept that tobacco, I've made a contract. This is a social contract between your community and mine to do this in a good way, to treat each other with respect and dignity. And that's why tobacco is so important. I'll smudge first and I'll talk you through the process. We always start in the east. And I'll let you know I cheated. I have a compass on my iPhone. So I was able to figure out that this is the east. I was born and raised in the city, so if I'm not on a flat piece of ash I don't know where I'm going half the time. So I take my glasses off. This is, the reason why we do that is because we're asking for good energies to come so we don't want to reflect them away. And you can do the same if you wish. This is our custom, it's not yours. It's entirely up to you. We start off by washing our hands. This reminds us to touch the world in a good way. We bring the smoke up over our heads. This reminds us to think good thoughts. To our eyes, to remind us to see the beauty in the world. To our mouths, to remind us to speak with kindness. Our ears, to remind us to hear only the good things. We don't have to take on the negativity if we don't want to. We then bring the smoke down our bodies to protect our energy and our spirit. And lastly, we bring the smoke to our hearts to remind us to put love into the universe. And this is the reason why we smudge. And it just cleanses us, it prepares us. I'm going to take this now and I'm going to do a small circle to smudge the roof. I'd like to thank the city of Moose Jaw, your new mayor and council and citizens for the opportunity to come and do this, to share with you one of our cultural practices. It's a practice that we've had since the beginning of time. So thank you all very much and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, Knowledge Keeper Ross. I would now like to communicate my message to the citizens of our great city, Moose Jaw. Good afternoon, Your Honor, friends, family, citizens, distinguished guests, and councillors. The right to vote is one of our most fundamental democratic rights, requiring a collaborative effort to thrive. I want to thank the 8,606 residents who ensured their voices were heard by voting over the last few weeks. I also want to applaud every candidate who stepped forward to run for mayor, councillor, or school board trustee. Our city is stronger for your dedication to our community. A special thank you to the families, friends, and volunteers of each candidate who supported us during our campaign efforts. Your unwavering support has made this moment possible. As we begin this new term, I would like to first acknowledge the previous council and recognize past mayor Clive Tolly and councillors Crystal Froze, Doug Blanc, and Kim Robinson for their services to the citizens of Moose Jaw. Congratulations to councillors Jamie Logan, Heather Ebby, Don Luning, Patrick Boyle, Chris Warren, and Carla Delaurier on your election or reelection. And congratulations to those named as school board trustees. Community has always been at the heart of my family and it is an honor to serve as mayor of this great city. I feel a tremendous sense of responsibility and am committed to leading by example and working in Moose Jaw's best interests. Right now, Moose Jaw has an incredible opportunity to shape its future, to build a city we're all proud of, grow our economy, and welcome families and visitors to a community that feels like home. Around this chamber, I see diverse backgrounds, skills, and perspectives. Together with city administration and staff, I believe we have a strong foundation for a productive team. While challenges lie ahead, so do opportunities. We will make the tough decisions and while we may not always agree, respect, honesty, and collaboration must guide our work. The people of Moose Jaw have given our council a clear mandate. Expectations are high. We have work to do and I can't wait for us to get started. Over the next four years, we will focus on fostering economic growth by supporting local businesses and industries, attracting new investments, and creating opportunities for young talent to build their futures and raise their families here. We will modernize infrastructure with smart spending and essential upgrades to roads, That Counselor Logan is hereby appointed Deputy Mayor effective November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and/or until a successor is appointed. Moved by Counselor Looning, seconded by Counselor Eby. All in favor? That is carried. Motion to appoint Executive Committee Chairperson. That Counselor Warren is hereby appointed Chairperson of the Personnel Committee effective November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and/or until a successor is appointed. Moved by Counselor Boyle, seconded by Counselor Deloria. All in favor? So moved. Next on the agenda is Communication Number two zero two four dash zero two five zero, dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, regarding the official results of the twenty twenty-four municipal and school board elections. I will need a mover and a seconder for the motion. That Communication CC dash two zero two four dash zero two five zero regarding the official results of the twenty twenty-four municipal and school board elections from the returning officer for the city of Moosejaw be received and filed. Moved by Counselor Logan, seconded by Counselor Warren. All in favor? So moved. That concludes tonight's agenda. The next regular meeting of city council is scheduled for Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And with that, we are adjourned.